2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and to the board members, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Let's hope we don't have those today. This meeting will be recorded by The Local Scene, formerly known as PAC TV. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by watching or viewing the Duxbury Government access channels, Verizon 39 or Comcast 9. Viewers can visit thelocalscene.media/duxbury for information about Duxbury programming, including streaming and watching replays on Duxbury YouTube. We have one new matter on for this evening and then, and an administrative matter, at least as I understand it, the new matter, we're just opening this, right?
Right.
Yeah. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Mural Room tonight to consider the application of Christopher Mead and Christine Roger, Chair of George Byrd, for a special permit under Articles 400 and 900, sections 401.2, 402, 410, 410.4, and 906.2 of the Duxbury Protective Bylaw. The property is located at 146 Gurnett Road, parcel number 138-013-003 of the Duxbury Assessor's map consisting of .11 acres in the residential compatibility and flood hazard overlay districts and owned by the applicants, who propose to build or rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on an open pile foundation. The pre-existing dwelling was destroyed by fire on October 18, 2022. A special permit is required. The application can be viewed at the town's website. Any individual with a disability may request accommodation. All right. With respect to this, why don't we talk about how this will proceed? We're going to go through the application and the correspondence, then we'll hear from the applicant, the board will ask questions, and then we will open it up to any public comment. All right. So we have an application, site plan, a memo from the health agent indicating it's, this is a, property is connected to the Marshfield Septic Treatment Plant, and therefore the Board of Health has no comments. We have a memo from the planning board, which indicated that they deferred judgment And there was a memo from the design review board, the substance of which I don't really I just didn't remember. So, the applicants proposed to rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Although the design is appropriate for a new structure in its beachy location, the designer review board noted a few concerns with the proposal. Access to the proposed roof deck is not clearly resolved. The architect said it would be accessed through a roof hatch within the structure. The building is elevated five feet above grade and open piles with no proposals for any skirt boards or other screening. Because the site coverage is already exceeding the allowable area, and the plans do not include storage space, it is likely the area below the first floor would be used for storage, and that would preferably be screened. The site coverage allowed for exterior decks and stairs is exceeded. The architect noted that this was due to the requirement to elevate the house. The acceptance, the acceptance of coverage is a policy issue for the ZBA to consider as potentially establishing a precedent. With consideration resolution of the issues mentioned above, the designer review board does not object to the proposal. We got an email from Helen Dodgett Plant at 137, addressed to Ms. Wazalouzki and Ms. Hatchey. Thank you for meeting me to explain the special permit to build. Please ask that my concerns be read and recorded. The height of the proposed building elevation is excessive. There will be substantial detriment to the view of the marsh and all of the natural beauty it offers to our neighborhood. How can the building be altered to retain the view we have already enjoyed for decades? The adverse impact would be a dire loss to our community. How is this new construction affecting the marsh wildlife? The proposed driveway appears to be beyond the necessary setbacks in the lot, placing it on the street and overlapping the abutting town-owned property. My concern is that cars will be parked on the protected town-owned land, causing more unnecessary environmental damage. Street parking is not feasible on Gurnett Road, particularly at number 146, where the road curves making it hazardous to pedestrians and bicyclists. How can this be altered to protect town-owned land and the safety of pedestrians? Due to high tides, flooding has increased yearly at Gurnett Road. This makes Gurnett Road at the turn in front of 146 impassable. I'm concerned that the new construction and additional cars will worsen the problem. How will this be addressed? We got another submission from Mark and Wendy Rayfield. It is, they apparently live at 142 Gurnett Road, and indicate that they're not opposed to building a home at 146 that complies with zoning and conservation rules and setbacks. However, we are not in support of variances to allow a build or to extend the size of the build on that lot. Based on that, we have questions and concerns. Our home is directly next door to the property since our purchase of the property, the next door cottage has not been lived in and over the years has fallen into terrible disrepair and was uninhabitable during all this time. Broken windows and open doors subjected the interior space to harsh weather conditions allowed animals to live in there and created havoc in terms of debris and mold for us. We called the fire department repeatedly to show our concern about it as a fire hazard and a risk to our property. To their credit, they did visit the property each time we called, took away the propane tanks, and eventually shut off all the gas and electric. However, this was not enough, and the suspicious fire on 10/18/22, which destroyed the abandoned home nearly destroyed our home as well. According to the fire chief, our home was three to five minutes from catching fire. We did sustain significant damage to our home, including shattered windows, completely damaged air and heating HVAC systems, and damaged furniture. It took a full year to restore our home to the condition it was before the fire. We explained all this to give some context to our questions. Also, please understand, we are not conservation or zoning experts, so our questions may not be valid, but we wanted to share them with you. Our understanding is that the house, being unlivable and abandoned for more than 10 years, no longer qualifies as a structure to be rebuilt. If this is an accurate understanding, it would appear the structure is in violation of codes, and we would not support the project. If the abandoned project is still considered a dwelling, then our understanding is due to the fact it is non-conforming on many levels. Any replacement must be, must keep the exact footprint and square footage of the ground coverage, whereas our comment would be the same, we would not support a variation to this. On height, we are look, we are going off guidance from our building project years ago, where we looked to build there versus our land, and it was explained that given certain codes, there was a limit to the height that was allowed for this property. Again, same comments on our, on the variances. Finally, the entire lot Finally, the entire lot floods during high tide. The flooding was increased on the lot and on our lot markedly in the past decade. I do not know the last time the wetlands or the land was surveyed, but when we purchased our property, the water would reach the edge of our lawn at a super high tide. 146 is submerged multiple times a year, almost monthly with water covering the marsh. Any approved design would need to address how this conforms and well, as well, in conclusion, we would support a build in compliance with the current zoning environmental codes, but not a special permit to build, which we think is required. We will, and the authors are going to be out of town. So why don't we proceed? Do we don't have anything else? All right. So we'll proceed by hearing from the applicant. You got to go talk into the mic or take the mic so that other people can hear you.
All set? Good. Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name's George Berg. I'm the architect. I represent the owners, Chris Mead and Chrissy Roger, Chrissy Roger. And we're here to obviously present documents that we've been working on and have been in play for a little bit of time right now. So first and foremost, as has already been mentioned, the property was destroyed by fire on October 18th in 2022. And subsequently, a demolition permit was issued for it in April of 2023. I think that was formally signed off as being complete sometime in May of 2023. The lot area is 4,149 square feet. The existing house, as near as we can tell, Paul Brogna was the civil engineer that got this through Concom, which took place before the current owners purchased the property. They worked very hard to try to figure out exactly what the footprint was because it had been an additive mass over the years with decks and some, some porches off the back. And they ultimately settled through working with the town records, the building department and conservation commission that the original house was approximately 594 square feet. The proposed house is right now set at a footprint of 6,657 square feet. So there's a net add of about 63 square feet. Again, talking to Mr. Brogna, while they were developing this, they were looking to try to normalize the footprint. You'll notice that the existing footprint was fairly eclectic, as you might expect with most of the houses on that, in that neighborhood. So what they did was they, they worked at square, sort of squaring it off. And they, they did, because it's an existing non-conforming lot, they made the decision to only increase or request an increase of 63 square feet as opposed to the 475 square feet that could have been requested, although I don't think we would have gone into that either. When my clients, when the clients, the current owners bought the property, there was a discussion about whether or not we should, you know, or we, you know, the fact that we could potentially request more from this board, but the decision was made frankly to just leave it alone, comply with the order of conditions that was issued by the conservation commission on May 31st, 2022, and stick with the 657 square foot footprint. With regard to the existing non-conforming issues is obviously the lot size is one, the frontage and setbacks. I will point out that the new proposal is slightly improving the setbacks currently. We're pushing the proposed structure further back from the road and pushing it in slightly from each of the side setbacks. The rear setback is, you know, has always been conforming to an extent, but the footprint of the building was really determined by conservation and the order of conditions. You can see that the tide levels and, and the, and the no-fly zone, so to speak, were clearly identified and agreed to with the conservation commission. We are increasing the height of the house, but we are under the 30-foot and this has been confirmed by the architectural review committee. We're allowed to have a foot height of about 30 feet there. We're just a little bit below that, but we, we do not exceed the allowable height in that zone, which is 30 feet. It has also been noted that the order of conditions required the house to be built. The original house was a slab on grade. The, the new house is approximately five feet above the grade with the first floor elevation being at elevation 13 based on the Concom. We have a, we have an existing grade elevation on the street side of eight, elevation eight, and then at the rear of the house, as the property slopes down towards the marsh, of elevation seven. So, you know, as was mentioned in our application, the bylaws allow for a 30-square-foot intrusion onto the setbacks for stairs and platforms and stairs. The platforms, we are, what's driving us over is the number of steps that are required. We can't exclude steps, so we've called that out as a non-conformance. We obviously, if we have to be at elevation 13 and we're getting down five feet, there's, it's a mathematical code-related problem for how many steps we need and the width that we need. So that's why with two needs of egress off the first floor, you know, we have two sets of steps of roughly 40, a little over 40 square feet. I think, I think our total intrusion technically, if we, if we don't back out the allowable 30, we're at a little bit over 80 square feet of intrusion. So, you know, a variance of roughly, you know, if we're, if we're at 80 and we had 30, we have about 50 square feet that we're over, but that's just a derivative of compliance with, compliance with the conservation commission and then the building code. So we have to, we have to deal with that. With regard to, with regard to habitats, again, there's a fairly substantial order of conditions that was issued in May of, May of 22. But on the site plan that you have in front of us too, in, on the general notes, items 10 through 15 and then 16 identify all the things that they were in compliance with, with regard to, you know, habitat, aquifer protection, areas of environmental, of critical environmental concern, area of habitat or rare life, wildlife habitat. So this was all reviewed by the conservation commission at the time the order of conditions was, was put forth and reviewed. And again, you'll notice there's a number of revisions on the Concom plan. In speaking with Mr. Brogna, the first two, the first two revisions were really just trying to make sure that everybody was going to agree to what the original footprint was. The architectural review committee had the comments that were read in. We did talk about the potential for skirting. There was, there's no plan for skirting now, but certainly they, they felt that, you know, it, we could, you know, the property could benefit that, but they, they didn't go so far as to require that. They were satisfied by the height related to zoning off of the finished grade or the average of the finished grades and the overall, you know, their overall discussion of materials and all of that had essentially a favorable review. So that, you know, and, and that can speak for itself. I think for the most part, you know, we, we understand, we certainly understand the letters from the neighbors. The, the applicants have received phone calls from two of the neighbors across the street who didn't have time to write letters, but, you know, I guess for the record, they were in favor of it. We can ask them for letters to submit letters for record, but they was, they were, they were in favor of the project. With respect to the views, you know, there was a, there was a residence that was there, albeit this is a little bit higher, but the, but the, the address, I mean, the people from the addresses across the street, you know, they, they, this is a very small detriment to, to the view, if we call it a detriment, because again, the house that existed there was, was there, has, had been there for several years. You'll also notice on the site plan that we were deliberate in, and Paul Brogna mentioned that we were deliberate in pulling the new house further forward and condensing it so that we would not, we would not be further out into the marsh beyond the neighbors at 142, which is the property on the plan east here, I guess it would be the east, northeast. So, you know, working again with the Concom, it was explained to us that, you know, that was, that was a deliberate move because we didn't want to further impede any view onto the marsh. If you're familiar with Gurnett Road, and I'm sure you all are, it bends around sort of to the west and then there's a large tuft of trees before it swings back west and goes out towards the beach. So it was important not to really impede that, but, you know, it was clear that the intent from the beginning was to reconstruct a house. In fact, the notes that I referenced before up at the top state that specifically, that the reason they were going to Concom at that point in time, because there was an intent to reconstruct a single-family residence. That I am happy to answer any questions or address any comments from the, from the board.
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to figure out how this thing is less than 30 feet tall. It's, first of all, I don't know what the grade is, 20 foot in front of the.
Roughly eight.
Right. And, and it says roof line is at 40.6, 40 and a half feet.
I think that's the break between the break and the gambrel.
That's correct.
On the right-hand picture, there's a 12 and a six.
So the way your bylaws identify the roof height, it's to the center of the, so center dimension from the first eve to the ridge of the roof.
Okay.
We have a, we have a classic gambrel that has a diameter of 12 feet, so all of the points touch that. So we're allowed, so we're measuring from six feet, you know, from six feet to that. So that's where we get the 29 foot six.
Boy, that's big.
It's big, yeah. Just between the scale and what's there. We don't have a coverage problem, right? You check the coverage? Jim, there's no coverage issue here, right?
No.
Because they conform, the previous structure conformed.
Previous, well, here's the scenario is there, the maximum amount, if they included 3% is 1,097.
Right, but.
But in this case, there's a small increase which just had to do with where there was an existing deck on the existing one and they drew that footprint over, but that was all proof of conservation. It doesn't create any other problem with coverage from my point of view. The, if you just did the calculation at 15%, it's 622.
But you don't get the 3% automatically.
No, part of the ask, I would imagine.
Right, right. No, I, and that's, that's fair.
Is there a new non-conformity relative to the.
Coverage?
Stairs?
That's an interesting thing. So I'll explain this.
Good.
Best I can. So it was, when I first looked at this, I said, well, building code does require access. That's a big concern. And when I looked at the original plot, the plot plan that I have, what I suggested that the applicant do, and I'm not sure how the board would interpret what I'm going to explain, but what I suggested they do is look at the existing non-conformity and let's look at the plan on the southern side or the left side of the structure viewed from the road was 10 and a half feet. The proposed 10.8, I suggested that they show a dotted line here at 10.5 to show what projected beyond that. And then the board could potentially look at it and make a determination to say, is that 30 square feet further than the non-conformity? And would that fall under the projection of steps and stoops up to 30 square feet? So I wanted to quantify it on the plan a little differently for easier interpretation, but I didn't get that drawn quite exactly as I thought might be helpful to you guys. And same with the front, the same scenario exists. Does that make sense to, to you guys?
Makes perfect sense to me. We need that calculation. We cannot allow more than 30 square feet inside that existing setback, 18, nine in the front and 10, five on the left-hand side.
That's the way I determined it. So it couldn't project any further than 30 square feet on either side. I did ask the civil engineer, I had a conversation with him about, this is the new plot plan and what I wanted him to do was show a dotted line on the proposed location to what the existing non-conformities were and then show us what that square footage was beyond that. It isn't exactly, didn't come out exactly that way here.
Are the stairs wide enough? They could reduce the width if they had to?
Minimum width is 36 inches, so.
Yeah.
That's a possibility.
What are these?
They probably propose a, what, four?
Probably three, six. I mean, we could get them down as narrow as possible to try to reduce that for sure. We can also work with Mr. Brogna to make that, you know, to clarify what you're asking.
Board got further questions?
I'm curious as to how you could add 400 square feet to this house. You indicated when you started that you could, you could have added 400 square feet and I'm wondering how you do that.
Yeah, interpreting the 3% rule above is what Mr. Brogner gave us, but we, we were just looking at that as a number. So if it's 20,000 minus the 41, 49 times 3%, it comes out to 475.
But you wouldn't be able to do that without encroaching on the setbacks.
Which is exactly why we do it.
So you can't do it.
Yeah, that's exactly why we do it.
Thank you. This is what I've been trying to get my head wrapped around to be able to say, but you just said it. Thank you. It's when you put all these rules together that you have a problem, I think.
It just, you made it sound like they were being generous and not making the house a lot bigger.
That's not what I was implying.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm kind of wondering where the other guy's going to park. Kind of seems to me we're real deficient in parking. There's only one parking space.
Yeah.
Somebody else comes down to visit.
There, there is a spot they have located on the plot plan. Can you see the front? I'm just going to.
Correct.
That says material and vehicle storage area.
It's a second parking space.
I guess there's an existing driveway, gravel driveway that goes onto the town land? Is that?
If I may through you, Mr. Chair, sorry. I didn't mean to just speak up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't intend to, you know, none of our plans or conditions include using town land that's adjacent to the space.
So you're going to eliminate that gravel driveway on the town land?
We are not sure we have permission to do that.
Yeah, I, Emma, I think I can touch the town land.
Yeah.
I'm just, there's a driveway on it.
Is that an existing condition or a proposed?
It says existing gravel driveway on the existing conditions plan.
Okay.
Right.
And if it's on town property, I don't know, do they can touch?
Well, a portion of it's on their property.
It doesn't show that on the proposed plan though.
Correct. The proposed plan has, it takes over the, there's a shell driveway where the, where the.
Yeah, our, our new driveway reconfigures that on what, for the piece that's encroaching from the, from the town land. We don't intend to use the town land at all.
I would just think you'd want us at least a second parking space on the lot. That's all.
They can park right in front of the road.
Do we have a minimum parking requirement in the RC district? It is two spaces?
Two, which they do show.
Yeah.
Where's this? Oh, I thought material and vehicle storage area was just construction related.
No, that's, that was permanently approved by the Concom for parking and storing a vehicle, I guess.
Okay.
There's not going to be much in the way of materials out there for grass or anything like that. It's likely going to be fresh shell or some, some kind of finished material on there.
So the two spots are, the one that's labeled proposed shell driveway and, and then the material and vehicle. the material and vehicle storage area?
That's correct.
So, Emma, you're right, they're going to park on the front lawn.
This is Warren. I had a couple of questions expected.
Yes.
The, well, since we're talking about parking, where is the really big spot here? Where are they going to be parking for shopping in this area? I mean, I don't think it's a whole lot of stuff in that high tide. It's all of a sudden, it's going to be a lot of people there. The other question, really, the ultimate height, how tall is the building at 142? Any others to the north, to the security, to the safety of the state's information that how and what is building is, to be, but...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm not aware of what the height of the existing building is. It appears to be, to be three stories, but I don't have the exact height, sir. They have a, and they may calculate their heights from a zoning standpoint slightly different. I believe they have cable, they have cable roofs as opposed to gambrel, but we can certainly get that information. It's, it's got to be easy to find.
Yeah.
I would imagine it's comparable, would be my guess.
Yeah, I'm looking to see. I have a photograph.
Pretty darn close. I drove by it the other day, yesterday.
Freeman, once you're going to go on the destruction of the area, I mean, will it anybody in the middle of the talks there comfortably, not the disturbing traffic or any more in the park?
I, they have a limited work, a siltsock that runs around, so they'll stay out of the resource area, I would think, but it's definitely going to be a little tight over there in order to set up stockpiling of materials as well as construction vehicles. I would imagine they'll probably park on Cable Hill or something of that nature.
All right, Dave?
All right, is there anybody else who wanted to weigh in with respect to this?
Mr. Chair, there is someone with their hand raised, so...
Yeah, let's go with that person.
Wait, you're right, Field.
I have a question. Just two quick questions. I can't understand. How, how tall in normal people language is this house? You know, like, you know, the top of the house to the, to the ground?
To, to the top of the ridge?
Yeah, to the top of the house.
29 feet, 6 inches plus 6 feet, so 35.6.
So, 35 feet to the very top.
To the very top. That's correct.
Okay. I guess the other question is, there really is no driveway there. If you drew my eyes, there's never been a driveway. There's sand that's come off my eyes across the beach where people have parked, and so grass doesn't grow. But, there's no existing driveway that's ever been. It's also pretty great as a place where cars park when they go down there, and up there, but there is no driveway. And the last thing is, if you wanted to have pictures of the old house, if you want to hear how the exercise was, but it was about a story and a half hall.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? I'd, I'd just like to say that I prefer this design over what we normally see, a full shed roof along both sides of the house. And I think he's done a good job with the gambrel design here, and he only has a partial dormer on one side and looks like none on the other.
I would agree. Agree. It's not as overwhelming as, as a lot of them that are going on. Definitely less overwhelming than I believe than the next-door neighbor, for sure.
So, I'll be a broken record, but since we don't have standards in the zoning bylaw to evaluate what's appropriate in this location, we really have to go on an application-by-application basis. This looks pretty good to me. It is tight, but, but it's the nature of that neighborhood.
Right. Is, nobody concerned about the stairs? Because...
I am. I think if we approve it, we make it subject to the engineer confirming with Jim that it's going to be no more than 30 square feet inside the existing setback.
Right.
Can that be done?
The pre-existing non-conforming setback, right?
Very good.
We can make that a condition of approval.
I did a quick math count before I sent this back to him, and it's, it's really doable.
It is.
With what I did. I just needed someone to quantify it here.
Yeah, we need it documented.
Right.
Can you do that?
We can provide that, yeah. We'll work with Mr. Waszuluski and, and Mr. Brogden in design. We'll figure that out.
So, no building permit shall be issued until?
Of course. And they need two points of egress, so that would stop that from happening, too.
Yeah, right.
All right. Anybody else have anything else they want to do with this?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, I, Wayne?
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Emmett.
Aye, Warren.
Aye, Freeman.
We already discussed it. Does people, do people want to discuss it further?
I'm, I think Mrs. Rayfield did make a comment about whether or not it's still grandfathered. What are the legalities with that issue?
You, you get three years from a burn down.
Okay.
And so the...
So, we're less than that.
And so, you're less than three years from a burn.
I can speak to one inquiry I got about that, was that one comment or question I had was that the structure was abandoned. And so, I'd been out there on a yearly basis because I would get complaints to make sure it was secure, and the taxes were being paid, so it really wasn't abandoned.
Right, that's right.
So, for legal terms.
What, what does constitute abandoned?
Non-payment of taxes and no one's in the house.
Water bill isn't being paid, water's shut off. I mean, nothing's, no activity.
Yeah, they, they were current because that was something I'd look into and...
Got it. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the application for a special permit at 146 Gurnett Road, subject to the requirement that the applicant document the 30 square foot within the pre-exist...
Projection, beyond the pre-existing setbacks.
I would second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Emmett.
Aye, Freeman.
Aye, Warren.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Tough site.
Very, very tough site.
Really difficult. Wow, I can't, it's hard for people with property out in that part of town.
But, I did be with the applicants quite a lot on getting this thing threaded in, the needle. They did a good job. It was a second round of plans.
I hope Paul did his job.
Refreshing, but a heart of God.
All right, so the next thing on the, the agenda for this evening is the DPW facility. We have to determine whether there's a substantial or insubstantial change based on, if there's a substantial change, we're going to have to have a public hearing. If we deem it insubstantial, we can decide whether we want to approve it tonight. The proposal reduces the approximate size of the building from 36,500 square feet.
Good night.
With a 6,500-foot canopy to 32.6 with a 4,600 canopy, reduces the impervious pavement, pavement area by 6,000 square feet, modifies the stormwater system to accommodate the reduced building and pavement area, and regrades the perimeter slope to eliminate the retaining wall and match the reduced edge of the pavement reference above.
Wayne, I'm going to recuse myself for this because I might be doing some, are definitely going to be least taken, so...
Makes sense. Anybody remember where the retaining wall was? I did review it all. I didn't think it was that substantial a change. Hi, Brian. If you want to show us?
Yeah, of course. We didn't have you on this since you all again. And we're gearing better, though, you know, it is taken favorably after all due modifications that were a minor major, including all the steel structures. So, I was trying to do a quick presentation on the ground in the morning the other night, and got approval there, so we're hoping to get approval here. So, just share my screen. If you can see my screen.
Sure can.
Okay. So, just to remind everybody, the DW is 878, we are applying to town hall.
I think we got that.
And, yep, and then we're here for just a quick, this is an additional modification on special permit. So, if you recall, the special permit was decision 2023-12. And then we had three planning permits, one for winged clearing, one for heat and hot performance, and one for industrialization. Those were reapproved the other day. And then here's a summary of my revision between Brad earlier. So, one of the things we did was reduce the floor plan. As you can see, the original plan is the top plan, and it's a little bit longer specifically in a maintenance phase. From there, you can kind of see, we were able to keep the same program, but shrink the building substantially instead of having a floor linear, maybe a four stacked phase. And then here's the retaining wall in red that used to be here. So, there is a lot of earth on the site. It is a pretty substantial hill on the backside of the DW that exists now that is kind of street covered. So, we had heard, you know, the retaining wall is expensive, you know, we're also trying to minimize our work. So, in reducing the building, we're able to actually bring in an additional pavement a little bit. And you'll see right here, it is revised limit of work with the wall, without the wall, excuse me. But, we were able to bring the revised level of work, which then allowed us to bring in the asphalt. So, from there, it kind of helped reduce a few things, even though the, the limit of work is very similar. It, it helps reduce the cost of the wall and things like that. And, you know, it gives the DW future expansion.
Right.
So, here is kind of the impervious pavement we were able to reduce. And then the original site where, as you can see, is shown in red. And I'm just going to kind of go back and forth, and you can kind of see, do you see up here on the north part of the page where you can kind of see the additional treating, where it's just to remove the retaining wall, even though we're removing a little bit more of earth. That in effect is cheaper than putting a retaining wall and keeping more earth. So, that is the model of the plan. So, let me just keep going. And then regarding the, the site revision, what happened is, when we reduced the building size a little bit, reduced the impervious area a little bit, we're able to modify the stormwater system and go from five chambers to four. And then we're able to also add additional bioquels along the base of the earth, earth work here. So, what that did is, that gave us enough linear area to kind of store water, treat it, and then put it into the retention system. So, all in all, we kind of tried to layer in with as much as we had in order to get a build-in for the DW. And it still does need typical standard mass requirements for stormwater, which we submitted over I for a few weeks ago. And then just due to the minor changes, we're asking for trade approval for insubstantial occupation of special permit. And we did submit everything to Warren on the center of the site.
So, how many board approvals did they need for this municipal project?
They needed, they needed planning because they were going to take a bunch of trees out. There were multiple planning permits. I remember dealing with...
They required site plan review.
And then a special permit?
Then a special permit.
For municipal project?
Correct. Zoning bylaw doesn't exempt that.
I, I know.
Oh.
I think it...
You brought this up last night.
Can you see these other permits?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Part of the reason, can I just mention why I have him here in front of you in case you don't?
Well, but, yes, you can, but I, what, the, the real contentious part of this thing was when people came in and they complained, were the people who were immediately abutting this project, whose roadway was flooding and, and, and quite frankly, is any of that stuff going to get addressed?
It did get addressed. So, I worked, I kind of championed that effort and got to the point that we now have a legal right-of-way that we didn't have. So, now we can modify it, and Brian will talk about how they can actually control that way better than it ever was.
All right, but is, is anything, is, is anything on this new plan doing anything to, to alter the existing permitting relative to that portion of the property? Because that's, that's the portion of the property that people came in here and complained about.
Yep.
And that was all, go ahead, Brian. I'll let you...
No, no, no. So, actually, that was the one area we didn't touch because we really...
That's what I was hoping you were about to say.
Yeah, we actually, that, that's our difficult areas to rework. There really aren't any other options, so most of the options were in the back of the site. So, what we're talking about is all here is what, is what we can have preferred.
Where the vegetation is...
Right.
Is now drawn in.
Yep.
All right. But, that, that hasn't changed since the thing that's been permitted.
Nope, not at all. It really is the left side of the page, the garden, a little bit of work, that kind of a bust to the back of the woods, kind of all of the cemetery. But, even so, if you take a look at the limit of work, you know that it's terrible over here. We didn't want to keep on that, obviously. So, yeah, mostly remaining back here or to the ground, just a lot of chamber that came in and on, so...
Does the change in the, in the, with respect to the retaining wall affect how much sand is going to be harvested?
It did a little bit. It did a little bit, just approximately, I would say, 3,000 to 4,000 cubic yards, I remember privately.
All right. Not sure I could sit on this.
Because you're on the planning board?
No, because I'm on the beach reservation board, and the sand is going there.
Oh, Jesus. Yeah, I guess, you know, packages out of the bin, and I'm not really sure, you know, how it all played out. But, one thing I will say is, we did do a little bit of extra testing. I'm sure we talked to editors afterwards. We have to be qualified for the job as a general contractor and have to do this. And so, we talked to editors and said that, you know, if we need to do more testing, it would be helpful. We did more testing down after the tour, which is what we were watching. So...
I'm so glad I'm a nobody, and I never have these conflicts that the rest of you have.
I'm not. I don't think it matters, so I'm going to, my sense is that the aspect of this thing that was contentious is not being addressed at all, and everything else is smaller. So, I would be inclined to deem it insubstantial. But, I don't know about anybody else. I agree.
No, I'm with you.
My, my concern with having them come back to you folks was that you approved a special permit to a plot plan, and we had small changes.
I got you.
You were doing your job.
I have the right one on hand.
You're doing your job. I'm not complaining about you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm not going to get deeply into the sand issue. We got to get a decision.
Yeah.
Well, and I'll be honest, I'm glad I come back to you with a project that hopefully is going to be underway very shortly, so I'll have you on that. So, this is, this is an answer, man.
Yeah. Well, then I moved to deem it an insubstantial change into approve the change.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye, Judy.
Aye, Warren.
Okay, we've done that. Do we have minutes?
We do.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian, very much.
I don't feel great about voting on that, but we needed to get a vote. Did you get a piece of it? Yeah, moving the sand. He's doing the sand. That's what he, it's for me to... He's doing the sand, that's one of the issues for me, too.
Um, so we have meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth. Judy Barrett, Wayne Dennison, Freeman Boynton Jr., Emmett Sheehan.
Move to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Freeman.
Aye, aye, aye.
And then we have minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Wayne Dennison, Phil Thorne, Fran Boynton Jr., Boris Boinech.
I move to approve the minutes as drafted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Boras.
That's everything.
I'd like to move to adjourn. Aye.
Be nice.
All right. Okay, we're adjourned.